Okay, we'll call the meeting order. We are, I think, one short of a quorum right now, but we can start the meeting and any action items would have to wait until we are able to vote until we have a quorum. Just for everyone's information who has not been here, there on your microphones, there's a button kind of right in the middle. When you speak, turn that button on. And then you should be able to be heard both online and better heard here in the room as well. Hey, Matt made it. Well, now we have a quorum. Joy is online, so we have four members here and Joy is online, so that makes a quorum. We'll do the roll call. Lisa? You should turn, there you go.
Yep. Clarence Campbell.
Here.
George Bouset.
Here.
Matt McKenzie.
Here.
Dr. Keller. Dr. Horning. Dr. Horning. Laura Cruz.
Here.
Joy Hendrickson.
Here.
Laura Negro. Laura Negro. Richard Huber. Richard Huber.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
A move to approve.
Second. Motion by Dr. Keller, seconded by George Bouset to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, anyone? Laura Negro is now online, so. Public comments? Anyone from the public wishing to make comments to the board? Anyone online? For public comments? Otherwise, we'll move to the next item on the agenda is the public hearing to take testimony for the development of the 2024 budget. Need a motion to go into public hearing?
So move.
Laura Cruz, second.
Motion by George Bouset, seconded by Laura Cruz to go into a public hearing. Is that a roll call vote?
Clarence Campbell.
Yes.
George Bouset.
Yes.
Matt McKenzie.
Yes.
Dr. Keller.
Yes.
Dr. Horning. He's not here, okay. Laura Cruz.
Yes.
Joy Hendrickson.
Yes.
Laura Negro.
Yes.
Richard Huber.
Okay, we're now in public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comments to the board during the public hearing? We have. Turn your microphone on, identify yourself, and then make your comments.
Hello, my name is Ruth Kressel. I'm an assistant district attorney here in Ashland County. And with me is Amy O'Donohue. We're both here for the same purpose. That is a request for the committee or the board to consider funding for a child forensic interview monitoring and waiting room in Ashland County. I do have some materials. I do not know if I can pass them out as an aide while I'm speaking, or if I can leave them in the room for you to pick up if you're interested.
Procedure is usually to leave them for everybody.
What was that comment? Laura?
This is Laura Negro. Usually procedure during the meetings, some public comment is that they leave the materials for us for later.
Okay.
Okay, yep, well.
Okay.
Okay, so while the materials are being handed out, because there's no discussion on what they include, it gives you a brief overview. Some of you may not know what a child forensic interview is, but this is what we've heard in a child forensic interview. My daddy kissed my cookie. Now, you may think that that is strange language, but for a seven, eight, or even 12-year-old child, that's been the subject of abuse, it is not. Amy O'Donohue, who is the liaison officer for child sexual and adult sexual assault and domestic violence, has heard this many times, not in those specific words over the course of her career, but when she interviews children that have been sexually abused, children use different terms than what is what we would normally use in the court system, in the judicial system, what we would normally use in talking in our own conversations about what has sexually happened to another individual or child. In Ashland County, historically, those interviews were conducted in a very small room, probably five feet by six feet, in the Ashland County Sheriff's Department that was utilized initially for an interview room for defendants, for people that were suspects in crimes. We have had the experience, in the term that I have been here since 2014, victims that think, when they're going into the sheriff's department, think that they're in trouble for coming to this location because it's behind closed doors, that they're in trouble for going in to tell what happened to them. Unfortunately, this has been the case in several instances, because unfortunately, that child has had the experience of going to visit a family or other person that's been incarcerated in the jail and knows that bad people get locked up in jail. So fortunately, to assist in this, when the Ashland Police Department moved and implemented its new building, they did create what's called a soft room, where they can take people that can be interviewed, such as victims. However, it's not the most ideal situation. One of the things that's lacking is because we're trying to implement a county-wide facility, a county-wide place that can be utilized by La Pointe PD, if that happens, by Mellon Police Department, if that happens, by the Sheriff's Department. And as a courtesy, as is outlined in the informational packet that you've been provided, the Ashland Police Department has been very generous with allowing us to come in, but oftentimes, it displaces an officer or an employee in that area, and family members are left out in the waiting room where there's absolutely no privacy at all. This is a tragic thing for a family to go through when a child reveals sexual assault or, in some cases, physical assault. The proposal that we have before you is seeking funding that encompasses some startup costs and then ongoing monthly expenses. And the multi-disciplinary child abuse investigation started several years ago by revamping what was a policy that was set in 1999. There have been multiple agencies involved in this revamping. And one of the things that was looked at is to have a place where we can go, where it's private, where it's not in the public area, so to speak, so that the family, who's also facing this along with the victim, has a place to be by themselves. And then, once the interview is completed, then that family can be spoken to in a private setting and talk about what steps are taken in the future. So initially, the MDT, Multi-Disciplinary Task Team, looked at all different aspects in Wisconsin, visited other areas where they have child advocacy centers, like a whole building set up. We know that that's not a feasible alternative for Ashland County. So what this proposal is asking for is the rental of two rooms, which are currently in the business portion of the New Day Advocacy Center, which they rent out to other businesses. Two rooms, one would be for where the interview takes place, where a trained interviewer, who has to go through training by the Wisconsin Training Guidelines and satisfy criteria, interviews the child. In the room adjacent to that would be a prosecutor, a social worker, another law enforcement agent person. I don't know if it's going to be the law enforcement person that's interviewing a child, or if it'll be a social worker, but alternatively, that person would be in the room. And why is that important? It's important because we want one interview that child. We don't want multiple interviews of that child, so that when that child is spoken to again, they give information that's not consistent with their first story. And as we have learned in the course of our sexual assault and abuse training, that a child doesn't remember things. This happened in the first minute, this happened in the second minute, this happened in the third minute. It's not a process that goes sequentially. It's a process that might start out with, he kissed my cookie, and then the trained interviewer goes back and develops those details while other people are observing, and we're writing down, okay, she needs to ask, where did that take place? Did that take place at grandma's house, or did that take place down at the cabin? Because we need jurisdiction, we need to know where it happened. So the people in the monitoring room are making sure that we're providing and getting any details that might be overlooked, or that just sort of pop into our heads. Now, as I said, we've utilized other places in the past. Have we had successful prosecutions? We've had, but there's also been problems. There's been problems with audio, where we can't hear the person. We can't hear the child, and that's one of the statutory requirements, that when we go into court, this audiovisual recording has to be understandable. And if it's not loud enough to be understandable, it's not admitted. One of the benefits of having this audiovisual recording admitted into court is because even though the child victim ultimately has to appear on the stand for cross-examination under the confrontational clause of the Constitution, we don't have to go through that same whole dialogue again. Tell us what happened, and what happened then, and what did daddy do? And what did you do? And what did daddy say? And what did you hear? Because it's all going to be on that recording. So the startup costs, as set forth, is one in this facility that we looked at. It's two rooms next to each other, and then, as a courtesy, we get to be allowed for the family waiting area, a private conference room that we can reserve through the New Day Advocacy Center, which is also available to other businesses. So it's not something, it's just part of the package deal. So we have to pay one month's rent in advance. And then, also, the other startup expenses is a computer, a laptop, and an owl for the recording. And that estimate, which is an attachment too, came in at $2,600. And that funding has already been secured by Jerry Esala in working with Essentia Health, who is willing to pay for that. The ongoing monthly expenses include $400 monthly rent and then internet access, which is also required, so that a prosecutor such as myself or such as perhaps Bayfield County District Attorney, if they use this interview room, or Iron County, if they use it, or Price County. And I mean, I'm including a number of other agencies, because they likewise do not have such a facility. So that the prosecutor wouldn't have to be there and still participate, because that is an important key component of making sure all of these elements are involved. The team, and Amy O'Donohue can speak to this, have looked at other options. And there's been a search. We went through all of the potential city properties available, through all of the county properties available. And there's no place for this to be put within any of these other agencies. So that's why this is requested for a separate location, where this can be in a private setting, where it's not provoking fear in the victim by thinking she or he is going to a police station to be in trouble. Now, I realize that Ashland County has a heavy burden. We just heard on the news recently about the tax situation. So we understand that, you know, this is a heavy ass. It's an ongoing cost, and it's not something we take lightly. But we are going to pursue this, and I know that perhaps the funding is not here from this agency. The funding might not be from the county, but there's a commitment between those of us involved in this group to make this for the betterment of the children, of the victims of Ashland County, so that we can prosecute these cases to the best of our ability and hold perpetrators accountable. Amy O'Donohue does have some statistics concerning the use of facilities in the past.
So I just collected some of my numbers. I try to keep numbers handy, and these are just the cases I was involved. So that doesn't mean this is an exact number, because there are other interviews that happened without me. But in 2021, I had 84 sexual assaults. That was both adult and child. Also, children are interviewed in a forensic interview who witnessed violent crimes. So children who witnessed domestic violence, who witnessed a homicide or a near homicide, we need to do a forensic interview with those children. It's also used for adults at risk, so vulnerable adults that have mental disabilities, we treat them as well in forensic interviews when they've been assaulted. So 2021 was 84, 2022, for just child sexual assaults, I had 90. That was a high year, that's both Ashland and Bayfield County. So I'm deputized also in Bayfield County. And then in 2023, so far this year, has been 26 child sexual assaults. And just one other thing I wanted to say is, due to the trauma, we can almost match the names of those who have reported a child sexual assault to our criminals, or our alcoholics, our drug addicts, I mean, all of them, you can connect the names due to that past trauma. So I feel like lessening the trauma of this, I've had a little girl say, am I going to jail when I'm done? She thought she was going to jail, she was 14 years old. I'm like, no, you're not going to jail. She knew the jail was connected to the building. Same thing with that, the police department, beautiful, we have a beautiful police department in the city. But again, you're right outside of the lobby, you can hear everyone out in the lobby. So, and then when they see uniforms, they think they're automatically in trouble. So that's one thing I state right away in my interviews. I've been a forensic interviewer since 2003. So right away, you know, when I can tell they're nervous, they're anxious, you're not in any trouble. I want to make that clear. And I think that's, I think that's all I have.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have comments to make, sir? Anyone else?
Could somebody use a microphone, please?
Anyone else wishing to make comments at the public hearing? Anyone online? I don't think so. Otherwise, at this point, we'll recess the public hearing and we'll continue on with our regular agenda items. And then if anyone should appear for the public hearing, we will reconvene the public hearing. We'll move on to 2023 year-to-date expenditures. Amber?
Clarence? Did you have to have a motion to recess the public?
I don't think so. I think we could just recess and then reconvene. Yeah. Go ahead, Amber.
Okay. So in your packet, I have the year-to-date for 2023 through April. There's. You know, we're the beginning part of the year, so I really don't have, you know, a lot of data enough. We're not really into our levy yet, we're using our grants, and you'll see that here for a little bit longer. One of the comments I wanted to make, because it was something that Belle had brought up, like looking at the levy for the community service programs, that will go back down, probably at our next one, we're just, as of that moment in April, we had not received all of our, received the money from MA yet. So that probably would be even different today if we looked at it, but at that point, that's why. So that will change on the next one, and it would be a higher for that. Looking at this, does anybody have any questions for me? I think Laura might be raising her hand, are you?
Laura is your, Laura Negro has a question.
So in the economic support, there's other direct, and I know it's not a huge amount of difference there, but it's at 271%, just there is certain thing happening in economic support.
Oh, okay. Let me check here.
And the same on the levy for the, well, you said some of the grants weren't in for that. Is that where the levy part is 271% there too?
Yes, yep. Hold on, I'm going to grab my economic support, I don't want to. And see, and it could be just like what was budgeted versus what's actual to date, and things might be switched, but overall, might be okay, but along that line. So let me just look and see if I see something kind of out of place. You know, I'm not seeing any red flags, but my, I will, I will look at the detail in that code, and it could be just like where the accounts that they put it in versus what was budgeted. But then, overall, looking at the budget in the end, and some of that stuff might end up getting moved around, so.
So I think what happened was, we had submitted a budget to the Northern Income Maintenance Consortium, and then they approved us getting a fully funded position with, they call it RMS funding. However, they didn't adjust the budget to reflect that that person is fully funded. They know it, but that's going to be lagging through this whole thing, and it will be 100% funded by the consortium.
Okay. So. Perfect, thanks. I came out right after the budget was done, so there'll be a lot of.
That would be under other direct? It wouldn't be under personnel for that, for positions? Because it's just, it's in the category other direct, that it's.
Is that RMS person?
Yeah, I guess we can check on that, but that's the only glitch that I'm aware of in the budget for this.
Laura, I will check that, and I can shoot you an email if there is something different or with a little bit more detail on that.
Or it could be, you know, it could be the funds for the three new people that we hired in their computer equipment and things like that.
Okay.
Right, because they were hired right at the end of the year, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, because I can see that be under other direct expenses for those, so.
I just got to dig into that account, and even if I had my laptop, I could pull it up, but I don't. So if I just look at it, I might even catch something real quick. So I'll check it out for you, and I'll let you know, and I could even send you the detail on that.
Okay, thank you.
Funky, you're welcome. Thanks for asking. Anybody else?
Any other questions for Amber? Okay, thanks, Amber. We'll move on to MIS software updates.
Do you want me to give that update, or, okay. Hi, Amber again. So Belle and I, along with Nettie, Terry Oviska, Tom from Bayfield County, we've been working with a new software, we're switching over our MIS over to EchoVantage. And it's been a long process that we started here in December, but in the first of June, we did what we call our soft opening. And everything is set up, we're getting everything set up as we go, finding glitches, but I have confidence that it's going to go well, go well here soon, and that stuff will get fixed. So that's going on right now, and we will be reporting telehealth in there for the month of June. But then July 1st, everything for the CCS programs will be getting put into Echo Live and will be getting switched over. So it'll be really nice to have the electronic health records on there.
Well, and just for a little history of this, we, when New Horizons North was still in business, they had an MIS system in place. It was kind of one of those garage endeavors, where there were one or two people. In this case, there was one person who, you know, created it, was our go-to person, and he became incapacitated, and there was nobody to take over the business. So this has slowly, and towards the end, quickly declined where it was going to lose all of our data. So this, this wasn't a wish for us, this was a need. And so we had to work quickly before the other system totally crashed to be able to import all the data into this new system. So it will be a better system supported, and many, many CCSs throughout the state of Wisconsin are using it for CCS. So we have faith that it will serve us well and be supported.
Mm-hmm. And we do have hopes too, to add more programs to it, so we can get more use out of the program, because one of our other systems is slowly dying too. So we have a lot going on there for that, and getting our systems up to date and supported. So that'll be something, we can give another update this fall, and hopefully, everything will be running smooth, right, Belle? Exactly. We're hoping by September, everything's nice and smooth, and we can maybe even start adding other programs to that software, so. And then our other, one, do you want me to touch on Patagonia too? Because we got, so Liz and I are also working on our public health, Patagonia coming on. It's going way slower than what we had hoped or anticipated, sadly. But right now, on our schedule, we have stuff scheduled out, starting in late July, like training August. But then they have a soft, like a live date of October, which we had asked if they can move up to September, because we'd like to be able to use for billing our immunizations. So that's kind of our, but we haven't, they have us on the list that they, you know, like a cancellation list, that maybe they can move us up, but I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything recently, Liz?
I have heard no updates from them, the schedule that they gave with the tentative opening in October is kind of where it stands for now, so. It's moving very, very slowly.
So that's our other new software.
Yep, and the update, the background for that one is, Patagonia would be an electronic health record for public health as far as reproductive health services, immunizations. It will hopefully streamline our billing for our immunizations. We could also utilize it for billing for other services, such as our prenatal care coordination program, streamlined billing for reproductive health, as well as electronic health record keeping. We had actually received, the funding for this is from a specific grant through the Title X program, specifically for health departments that have the paper health records, trying to bring everything up to date with an electronic health record.
Any questions on that?
Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan.
Sure.
Um, okay, so this is basically I wanted to, we wanted to start the conversation on it because. Being short on office space after. I'm observing all of our wonderful CCS people from the, from the building. A little bit tight and Terry had this. Bid from what year was it, Terry? Two thousand, it's a little bit old, eighteen? Um, there was a full set of plans and, and that and bids from there. So we are looking at old numbers. So in your packet, there was a CFP plan that I submitted to Dan. And wanted to start discussion to see if this is something that would be supported if we want to look into and get some twenty twenty-three figures because obviously they're going to be quite different. And. You know, possibly see if this is a project that can be moved forward or something that could possibly put on the debt levy. Once we see how all that stuff comes through once budgeting process starts. So. Just very, very, very preliminary and rough numbers, but like I said, kind of want to start that conversation to see if this is something we can. Look into and see about getting us some more space that is needed for all of our current employees.
Um, yeah, so in twenty eighteen, there, there had been an architect who had been. Hired to do a whole drawing and proposal. It was if some of you have been on the board long enough, you remember. This would have been an addition. And had office space and intake rooms in the, in the addition part. It would have moved public health over to where our reception is now and created office spaces for there and the. So it was, it was quite entailed and there was also a lower level for storage. And the architect really. Thought it would come in well under what the bids came in. I think the, the architect thought it would come in around three hundred thousand and. The lowest bid came up almost to five hundred thousand. So that's when they decided to just give us some ceilings in the back and revamp it so that the. HVAC system was better. There would then be some confidentiality because we had ceilings back there, which we didn't have before. So. Everything was going smoothly and, and I just want to say if this were to move forward. We don't need all the bells and whistles. When we hire an architect, come to find out from experience now, they put in all the high-end details because. They're going to market this in the future. And they've showed us different ones that they have. Completed and then use that as a marketing tool and they're all very high-end finishes, very high detail, everything. You know, we've always been very frugal, so that's nothing that we're looking for. We just need some space either, you know, we looked at maybe getting a storage. Building, but then we had record snow amounts. It became very clear to us, we don't have room for a storage building. We barely had anywhere to push the snow and still have some parking. So. You know, having to take in CCS within a couple of weeks of notice, we, we did it, we. We got everybody in. We have many, many people working remotely and that's the only reason we were able to do this. And we have some people working remotely that don't want to work remotely, but there's no space for them. If we were to take on any kind of new program or anything that requires more staff. We just don't have the space. We don't have space for record retention, which is why we also switched to an electronic health record. So that we don't have two hundred. A basement somewhere or a storage building. So we're doing what we can, but we are out of space. So just. Like Amber said, just kind of plant the seed. About the need and I know, you know, there's been different proposals when they, when they did this. Drawing, I know prior to that, they had done a whole markup of what a. Justice center or a government center would be on the Farm Road property. So I know that they're looking at different options, but just wanted to plant the seed again that. We, we have no room. So if it were to. Have a new program mandated for us, we, we would have to do something. And so we're just trying to be proactive.
What kind of action? Requested? Are you suggesting?
Well, I think that just to forward it to maybe finance to have them just be aware of the need. And included in the capital improvement. Project, just for consideration.
Matt?
Yeah, I'm not comfortable yet with just sending a number. I would like to see more details and, and some sort of tentative plan and some updated numbers. Otherwise, how do you know where you're at really? And, you know, just. It just doesn't seem enough to work with yet. Other than give some money is almost what it seems like and we, we get that, but.
Well, what we did, because we were told back then that if we didn't act on it, then it would be seven percent per year since then. So we took the, the bid that came in and basically added on. Seven to ten percent for inflation that was not projected back in twenty eighteen, but of course hit us. Extremely in the construction industry. So they aren't just numbers we pulled out of the air, but. You know.
I understand the ask and I'm not saying I'm not in support of that. I'm just not in support of not having numbers and sending something forward. I'd like to see something a little more definitive about what you really need based on these plans.
Yeah, I come, I was kind of thinking the same thing, you know, I just look at this and it says. You know. Three hundred and fifty thousand for twenty twenty-four and three fifty for twenty twenty-five. But that's all it says. It doesn't say what that entails. I mean, like you say, it's. It's kind of up in the air there and, and what are we asking to be done for that?
Right, like it there, like I said, I was just kind of wanted to start that conversation too. So like it just looks like I just threw numbers in there, but. You know, we did have our thought process and, and I get everything you're saying and I do agree. You know, and, and just like I said, wanted to have it kind of in there for finance too to also just to think about. We can definitely look into getting more of a plan too, but. Let's keep it, you know, I just wanted to kind of keep it in mind that, hey, if there looks like there's a couple hundred, you know, three hundred thousand on the debt levy that we could possibly put towards it. And put it over a couple of years, like, and that's the other reason that I had it over two years and not one was maybe there was something. We could do with that. So that was just my thought process for, that's why you have two numbers over two years was just to try to. You know, or maybe there's a year that highway has less improvement fund that, or less improvement dollars that they need, then maybe we can. You know, like that. So that's the thing, like I don't have, you know, not seen what everybody's come, you know, has come in and. You know, just kind of starting it and seeing and maybe there's a year coming up that like, oh, hey. This could be, you know, next year it is look like, maybe we can get in some serious numbers and. Put that in there or in twenty-five, so.
Anyone else with any questions or comments?
This is Laura. Yeah, they, uh, there's no way a seven to ten percent increase for every year in between twenty eighteen and now would. Anywhere near be covered with depending on what the actual specs of this project are. This should be, i- if, if there is. Something that's needed, I would think there would need to be a space need study done too and. Also a, a fully detailed. List of things and costs put in front of us with a whole new. Scope of, of everything because I, I, as much as I understand everybody needs space, this, this isn't the only department that is. A little bit clustered together. I, I know I can hear CCS going, hmm hmm, us. But. It, it needs to be a more solid plan, I think, before it comes to us instead of just, and I get a starting talking point, but we could have. Had that a little bit different. It, it needs a better plan. And I would think public property would come into some of this. And then finance, because maybe there's some other projects that could be bid out at the same time. If we're going to make a longer term plan for making space for. Any department or multi-departments, so.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I think at this point, yeah, like Laura says, maybe public property. Is the committee. That you should take that to. Because they're the ones that are basically oversee all our property. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll move on to inclusion, family care update.
Um, this is Tasha with the adult unit. So recently, Inclusa, which is one of our family care organizations that serves. Our area. Was bought out by Humana. We don't have a whole lot of updates on it at this point. That is, it is final, but. When we're being told at this point that nothing should change, the services should stay the same and. Everything should remain as is at this point, but we just wanted to make you aware of. Of that. And then another update with Inclusa is we were notified about two weeks ago that they're currently on a corrective action plan with the state. Again, we don't really have any, any details on that, but. Just wanting to make you aware. And I believe the talking points on both of those are in your packet.
Any questions about that? Next item is public health update. Your on.
Okay, just making sure. Hello. So just a follow-up from the last meeting. Where we had discussed the potential of offering a reduced. Reduced testing bacteria sampling for wells, private wells that may have been affected by seasonal flooding. And we did offer that throughout the month of May and we did have several community members take advantage of that. So. There is a map that we worked with our GIS, the county GIS department helped to create this for us. So just some background, the, the reduced cost bacteria testing was offered for individuals within Ashland County that were affected by the seasonal spring flooding. The testing was conducted with our in-house certified lab and we were able to provide the testing to the individuals. Who requested it essentially at cost of supplies. So to complete the testing, the individual either collected the water sample from their tap or whatever their potential contaminated water source was. This was if they collected it themselves, we either provided them with directions or if they were unsure that they were able to collect it adequately. We did offer an onsite visit to have a staff member actually go out and collect the sample for them. So once the sample is collected, it's brought back to our office and we introduce it to the medium and then it incubates for at least twenty-four hours. There are, the tests either return safe or it could return unsafe with Colisher present, E. coli negative or Colisher present and E. coli present. So depending on the results, we notify the individual and if it is a potentially unsafe sample, we provide them with resources or the next steps on how to treat the well. So we did collect all of the data from this. So on the map that shows the larger portion of Ashland County, you can see. The red lines are actually the roads that were closed related to seasonal spring flooding. And then the little green dots are the areas that private wells were sampled and all of those green dots indicate that those returned safe. On the lower portion of the page, that does include Madeline Island then. There were also a small section of road closure on Madeline Island. And a contaminated well that did come back as unsafe. Fortunately enough, there was no E. coli present in the well, but it was a contaminated well. So that individual was provided with the resources on what's next steps to take on how to correct that. So we plan on continuing with this data and we will. Continue to collect the data as seasonal flooding events occur in the future. So that it might help us down the road to identify areas where we might need infrastructure improvement. Or where the environmental impacts are adversely affecting our population, specifically their drinking water sources. So any questions on that? Okay, hearing none on that, then the other update I wanted to give as far as public health is we had submitted an application. To the DHS Public Health Vending Machine Program, which is part of the opioid settlement funding opportunity. And our application has been approved. So we have been approved for sixty-five thousand dollars with the potential to request supplemental funds for an additional five thousand dollars. Just kind of depending on how our budget comes in. So the funding is specifically to support the installation of harm reduction, public health vending machines. The funding will cover all of the costs associated with the installation of the machine directly as well as the supplies to stock the machine. We are partnering with Bad River on this to determine best placement as far as locations. They have a separate line of funding that they're using for a community feasibility study that will help us to pinpoint locations that would be. Most targeted or most in need for harm reduction supplies that we would be able to try to establish these machines in those locations. So the funding is anticipated to start effective July first. So we have a little bit of additional research to do. We have already looked into the cost of the vending machines and a supplier for outdoor climate, climate controlled machines. And we do have a couple of bids on those, so moving along. Any questions?
Thanks, Liz. Staffing updates.
Well, for a change, it will be very short and sweet, so I'm very happy to tell you. The extra position you okayed for our children's long-term support and coordinated services teams. Was filled by Tiffany Hayes. So the adult unit is fully staffed at this point. And the children's unit is very close to being fully staffed. We are. Finishing up interviews for the open position for the family specialist. And we have some really great candidates, so we think within the next couple of weeks, we will be, I shouldn't say it out loud, but. We should be fully staffed, knock on wood. And that's it.
Okay. Twenty twenty-two annual report.
So that should be in your packet and. If you can just pull it out, we'll just have each manager just do two to three minute update to review. Kind of the highlights of what their. Unit accomplished and the challenges that they had in twenty twenty-two. So we can start with. Adult Services with Tasha.
Hello again. So. We, the adult unit is comprised of many different programs, as you know, so I'm just kind of going to go through as they're laid out in the. Annual report. So the ADRC staff, the, the information and assistance specialist or the ADRC specialist. They enrolled sixty individuals into long-term care programs last year. So between family care and IRIS, sixty individuals. They received a hundred and ninety referrals from Ashland County residents. Those may not be unique referrals and maybe people that they worked with on more than one occasion throughout the year. Our elder benefit specialist, Amy Janasek, worked with two hundred and eighty-three. Unique clients. Our dementia care specialist, she worked to train fourteen businesses and organizations. In essentially the last half of twenty twenty-two to be more dementia friendly. In twenty twenty-two, we had. Sixty-nine adult emergency detentions. Forty-one of those were dismissed. We toward about the middle of the year, we started meeting with law enforcement on a monthly or bimonthly basis and just kind of talking through some of the struggles that they're dealing with and then the struggles on our end with those emergency detentions. And the second half of the year, we really saw a pretty significant decrease in emergency detentions. And that has continued so far into 2023 also. For our rep payee, oh, sorry, the coordinated services team, we, which is our CST program, we had 18 kids in that program. And that program really looks at kids that are involved in multiple different systems and programs to kind of get everybody to the table at the same time. So people, so the child and family aren't having to have so many separate meetings. In our children's long-term services, we had 44 kids last year. I think the, the most drastic change in numbers we saw last year is with adult protective services. Last year, there was 112 adult and elder abuse investigations that were completed. And that number was up from just 73 in 2021, so pretty significant increase. We also had 17 new guardianship petitions last year and the year before, I believe it was only seven. So much, much increased workload for adult protective services. And then our representative payee had 42 clients in 2022.
Any questions for Tasha on her report? Child support is next.
All right. Hi, I'm Kelly Medea. I'm the child support administrator. And just a little bit about 2022 for us, we started co-hosting job fairs. We did one in the spring and one in the fall with our W-2, which is a Wisconsin Works, kind of like a cash assistance program with our liaison from the region. We didn't have great attendance, so in 2020, we did one in the spring and now in the fall, we plan to partner with Northland College and we also partner with Bayfield County Child Support to kind of have a one, two big ones rather than all of these little ones because Northland had one and so on and so forth. So we plan on tweaking that a little bit. We also had in 2022, one of our child support specialists left and went to be a specialist in Bayfield County. So we had to advertise, interview, hire a new specialist, which meant that we all dispersed her 500 caseload to the rest of us, which increased. I had to take on a caseload as well as the other child support specialist took on a little over 100 cases each. So that kind of took a hit a little bit on our performance as we, it's hard to keep up with that many cases. But when we hired the new person, we decided to make a move to specialize. Prior to 2022, we did everything, every, the worker did everything from start to finish, from establishing paternity, intergovernmental cases, which are cases that come to and from other, other countries, other states. Enforcement, they did it all. So every case they had from start to finish. So we took a look at what everyone did best. We have someone who's really great at enforcement and she does phenomenal. And we have somebody that's really likes the intergovernmental work, which the rest of us don't. So we looked at that and decided to specialize more. So we now have someone who does all the paternities, someone who does all the intergovernmental and interstate work, someone who does roughly 90% of the enforcement because there's just too much for one person to handle. And we are going to monitor our performance and see over the next couple of years if we see that go up with that or not. So that is something we tried new and we'll see how that plays out for us. But other than that, we did, the public health emergency was still in place in 2022. So a lot of our clients were still getting medical, Wisconsin MA and the, and the maximum food share allotment, which caused a lot of our clients to not need to work. They had more food share benefits than they've ever had before and were getting their healthcare regardless of what their income was. So they didn't need to work. But we're hoping in 2023 that that changes now that the public health emergency has lifted. If you have any questions about anything you see, let me know or email me and I'll be happy to answer for you.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Next is Children and Families Unit.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Jerry Essel. I'm the supervisor for the Children and Families Unit. And I want you to all know, you're very lucky. I burned up all my really good dad jokes in a meeting this morning, so sorry about that. So I guess my, I don't want to go through my whole report or anything, but I just want to take a few moments and just point out what an amazing staff that I have. In, in 2022, we, we took 316 child protective services reports into our agency, which is up from 266 the, the year before. Mind you, we have seven social workers that are, that are responsible for doing all this work. We had 107 cases of physical abuse, 119 cases of, of child neglect, 79 cases of sexual abuse of a child, which is in line with what Ms. O'Donoghue talked about earlier. 23 cases of emotional abuse. We had 11 drug affected infants, which is actually included in our neglect numbers. And 12 cases of unborn child abuse. An unborn child abuse is cases in which the mother is habitually uses a controlled substance to a severe degree and her use of that substance has a significant risk to the physical health of the unborn child. What you, what you won't see in that unborn child abuse number from 2022 is we ended up in the first two months of 2023, taking five of those babies into custody, right out of the hospital and, and placing either with relatives or in a foster home. And I blame Terry Barningham for that because she, she bought, bought a bunch of car seats and then we started having to take these babies into custody. So that, that is on the child abuse neglect side of things. In, in 2022, we had 110 youth justice referrals, which was a significant increase from the 67 youth justice referrals that we had had the previous year. Fifty-one of those cases went on to a petition to the court, which is up from 39 petitions in 2021. One thing I, I want to make sure folks are aware of is in 2022, the state of Wisconsin did a workload study for, I believe that was in 22 or was it 21? 21. Did a workload study case where statewide for CPS, child protective services and youth justice workers. The kind of standard caseload for a youth justice worker in the state of Wisconsin is 16 to 19 youth. And both of the youth justice workers in, in my unit have caseloads of about 35 kids. The same holds true for my child protective services ongoing workers. The kind of standard caseload in that, in that realm is somewhere between six and nine families. It's counted a little bit different. And both of my workers have over 10 cases. So as a result of our, of our reports that we took for child abuse and neglect, we had a substantiation rate of 18.73%, which is, which compared to the state average, basically was state average was 18.11%. Ashland County performed 93 initial assessments on those, the abuse and neglect cases. And I just want to point out that this number is considerably higher than our surrounding counties, a number of which have very, very similar populations. We did 93 initial assessments. Bayfield County did 41. Sawyer County did 79. Price County did 30. Those three counties are basically the same size as ours. The other big thing I think to point out, and I'm, I won't go through all of Scott's information because there's a bunch of it in there and he said it pretty much explains itself. But I, I think that I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention what an amazing job that Scott is doing with Spark and, and his folks over there. We have seen, and I think I pointed out at, at last year's meeting, and it's still true to this day, we've seen a, a decline in the number of delinquent acts that were, that are being referred to us that are occurring in the community. We, we have seen a steady increase since 2018 of the number of delinquent acts that are occurring in school. But ever since we've had Spark, those numbers have been going down as far as the youth justice referrals that we're seeing in the community. There's no way to prove that that has anything to do with Spark, but I, I think it's, it's a pretty strong correlation. So anybody have any questions?
Okay, thanks, Jerry. Community service programs.
Hello all. So as you know, that in 2022, our unit was given a little over two weeks to move the entire unit and that we had a lot of help from the highway department. We couldn't have done it without them. And then all of the folks who were already in the Sanborn Avenue building really made us feel welcome, even though we are squished like sardines. Most of my team is sharing offices. And if, when we want to do something that's confidential, we have to go to a conference room or something like that. So it, it really does impact, it really does impact my team in particular with the space issues that we have. The other thing that was particularly evident was going into the second year of the pandemic in providing home and community services. In January and February last year, Omicron had hit. And so I am happy to report that with the cautions that were set up and they took, there was no transmission of COVID within the program between staff and staff and staff and participants. That did not happen with a lot of our colleagues across the state and their other psycho-social rehab programs. As you can see, we served 95 people in 2022, seven of them were children. We had 108 referrals. One of the things that are, we, that were, was happening is a lot of our referrals were coming from B H U's inpatient unit. And once, you know, we would, we figured out how to do warm handups. We'd go up there, we'd do the intake before they left and then we would call them the day after they got out. And the person who answered the phone says, they aren't here. They aren't going to be here. We had no address. It, or the address wasn't good. And because we go right out to people, the, the address and talk to whoever sat that address and so that was a significant issue. We worked with B H U. We talked to the social workers so that they could better understand our program. And in addition, we've set up, so the Bayfield CCS team goes up to B H U once a month to the inpatient unit, to one of their groups and explains to the clients in the hospital what the CCS program is. And then our staff also goes up there once or twice a month to those groups. We try to hit like three out of four weeks of the month. That, that has helped, though we still have a number of people who come into the program and part of it is the nature, the cyclical nature of mental illness and the cyclical nature of substance use. The other thing that happened in 2022 was we added a residential provider. So CCS was able to pay for the therapeutic portion of, of somebody who was in a group home. We worked with a, a adult unit on that. Then in, in CSP, as you'll see, we didn't serve anybody in CSP in 2022. Our, our model is to serve people in the least restrictive setting. And what we also found was that we incorporated our CSP psychiatrist, who is a telehealth psychiatrist and the CSP RN into the CSP program. So we have, I, I think a very unique, I haven't heard of anybody else in the state doing this, but a very unique program in which we can provide CSP type services within the CCS program. The only thing CCS cannot provide that CSP can is that CCS cannot take involuntary people who don't want to be, don't want help, where CSP can. So we are maintaining our certification for the CSP program and, and are ready if that situation were to happen. And then CRS is a very specialized program that really fit more with CSP. And because we didn't have anybody in CSP, we didn't use CRS. Again, everything in CRS is provided within CCS. And CCS is 100% with the cost is paid for 100% where those other programs we get, the county levy has to pay for 40%.
Any questions for Val? All right, next is economic support.
Hello, my name is Amy Piccetti and I am the Economic Support Supervisor. A few of our highlights from 2022. I'll start with the consortium. For those of you who might not be familiar, the consortium is a 12-county grouping that works to serve the residents of all 12 counties. That includes Ashland, Bayfield, Iron, Vilas Wood, Taylor, Forest, Florence, Rusk, Sawyer, Price and Lincoln Counties. Just specifically for Ashland County, in 2022, we had an annual food share benefits that were issued were $7,546,037 just for our county residents and that served 2,538 people of our Ashland County residents. For childcare subsidies, that is a program that assists families with daycare expense. It is a subsidy. It doesn't cover the entire daycare expense, but it does assist quite a bit. For that particular program, the expenditure there was, for benefits for folks was $195,414.42, which averaged out to about $354.01 per child. In addition to, or in relation to rather childcare services, we at Ashland County do also certify daycares. That's separate from the Wisconsin subsidies childcare program, but we do certify daycares. So for 2022, there were two new providers who were certified and then three of them were recertified. And our daycare certifier also did, completed 10 visits to daycares for 2022. Sorry, those are a lot of numbers. In relation to the consortium, just to kind of give you a broad idea about what our staff are working with for 2022, for all residents of the 12-county consortium, our staff collectively handled 85,000 plus phone calls for 2022 between renewals, applications and food share six-month report forms. And just to be clear, the renewals and the six-month report forms were very light in 2022 due to the COVID public health emergency and the rules that affected those programs. Collectively, it was about 47,000 plus renewals, applications and six-month report forms that were completed. And 47 fair hearings altogether were completed. So that's on that end. As far So that's um, on that end. As far as Badger Care Medicaid, so the healthcare end of things for two thousand twenty-two, there of Ashland County residents only, five thousand two hundred people were served. That's five thousand two hundred individual people um, with a total um total benefit amount of forty-three million, five hundred and seventy-four dollar, I'm sorry, forty-three million, five hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars altogether for benefits, just strictly for Ashland County residents. Um, we also do have overpayment. Um, sometimes there are overpayments. Uh, sometimes it could be a worker error, client error. Um, for food share last uh, for two thousand twenty-two, we did collect um, or rather processed overpayments. Um, it was one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. That is our um overpayment team that handles that, which does include one Ashland County staff member. Um, for Medicaid, for overpayments, there were no overpayments for Medicaid um, due to the public health emergency. Um, so nothing was collected for that. Um, for energy assistance, uh, Wisconsin Home Energy Assistance Program, commonly known as known as W E P or Heating Assistance. Now, that program does have a fiscal year that differs from a typical calendar year. So it's typically October first through September thirtieth of the following year. And so for the fiscal year um, last year, we had nine hundred and seventeen applications that were approved. The average heating benefit that members received um, was five hundred and eighty-seven dollars. The average electric assistance that people received, um, again, just strictly Ashland County residents was one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, the total benefits received for W E P was six hundred forty-three thousand, uh, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And then in addition to that, we also have a crisis funding for that for the fiscal year of two thousand twenty-two. Um, we issued out one hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. And we replaced twenty-five furnaces for Ashland County residents for two thousand twenty-two and repaired forty-seven furnaces. So that's all I have.
Any questions? Fiscal and Administrative Support Unit.
Hi, Amber Erickson, Finance Manager. Um, don't have as much fun stuff to highlight. It's kind of boring in our little department, but uh, very important, right? Um, so in two thousand twenty-two, um, I did start um, in this position at the end of the year. Oversee all the uh, fiscal and administrative support for all of our departments at the uh, San Marino and also for the A D R C of the North. The numbers for twenty-two, twenty twenty-two and twenty-one were actually very, very similar when I um, ran these. So we had about three hundred and fifty thousand in payables each month and approximately one point four um, in forward health revenue. In uh, two thousand twenty-one, the first year we used Kerber Rose um for our audits and there was no major fiscal assessments or um, non-compliance finding.
Okay, thanks, Amber. Uh, Public Health.
Liz Zat, Health Officer. Um, Amber, I'll trade you reports. So if anybody's counted pages, the annual report for public health is twenty-eight pages by itself. Um, so I will attempt to give you the Cliff Notes Cliff Notes version of things. So turn pages quickly to keep up. Um, just some of the highlights. So for our Community Health Needs Assessment and the Community Health Improvement Plan, we are in the final year of our current championship. Um, we have started the early conversations and beginning planning stages for the next Community Health Needs Assessment, which will take place um, in spring and summer of two thousand twenty-four. Otherwise, we are on track with that as we are right now. Um, moving to the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program, also known as F E P. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, we became members of the Western Wisconsin Public Health Readiness Consortium. They are a mouthful. Um, as part of the consortium, we were able to participate with the round two of the Vaccine Community Outreach Grant. Um, so this grant specifically focused on using a variety of platforms to reach populations with the purpose of ensuring up-to-date and accurate information, uh, specifically regarding the COVID nineteen vaccines. Um, the consortium also continues, um, they're they're very, very beneficial as far as meeting contract goals and objectives, as well as providing assistance with training and education to staff who work within the F E P programs. Um, for our immunization programs, um, we continue to be a vaccine for children and vaccine for adult provider. So we offer all of the recommended A C I P vaccinations for both youth and adults. Um, throughout two thousand twenty-two, we also continue to provide the COVID nineteen vaccinations. Um, we continue to pri- um, offer clinics as well. We just to get the plug in, we have a clinic scheduled for Monday. So if anybody is looking for another booster, if you qualify, um, we have clinics on Mondays. Um, otherwise, in two thousand twenty-two, we also became an M P O X vaccination provider. Um, as the M P O X outbreak peaked over the summer and into the fall of two thousand twenty-two and the Genios vaccine was made available. Uh, Ashland County was a spoke location for the distribution um, within the northern region. And we do have, I have all of the numbers for, you know, flu vaccinations, COVID vaccinations. All of that was provided um, within the report. Um, and we tried to include different graphs just to kind of give a visual display of the numbers. Um, in addition. Um, for our Family Planning and Reproductive Health Services, we continue as a full-service women's health and family planning reproductive health program. We also receive supplemental funding through healthcare education and training, also known as H C E T. So they help support our get yourself tested programs as well as expedited partner therapy. Um, in addition to our regular programming, uh, following the June twenty-fourth um, two thousand twenty-two Supreme Court decision um, in Dobbs, the Jackson Women's Health Organization. Um, at that that, at that time, there was uh, much uncertainty in the state and throughout the nation um, regarding abortion act- access and education and healthcare for pregnant people. A representative of our department joined and routinely participates in the statewide reproductive health work group. Uh, this work group helps to identify issues and trends in reproductive healthcare. The work group did assist in drafting and the publication of post-Dobbs implication to abortion care in Wisconsin, which was a focused brief. This was done along with the assistance of the Wisconsin Public Health Association, W A L D A B, and the Wisconsin Family Planning and Reproductive Health Association. Uh, the next program to highlight would be our overdose fatality review team. Um, two thousand twenty-two was when we initially started to conduct the case reviews for this and we successfully completed five case reviews in two thousand twenty-two. We do continue to meet on a monthly basis um, throughout two thousand twenty-three thus far. Um, the O F R helped to sponsor an event in the spring of twenty-two in partnership with Bad River to help raise awareness for pregnancy and postpartum depression and mental health disorders, which also includes substance use disorder. Um, we also kind of along with O F R, we became a Narcan direct provider. And we also participate with the fentanyl test strip distribution program. Um, I'm a certified trainer, train the trainer for both Narcan and the fentanyl test strip distribution program. Um, throughout twenty-two, we distribute distributed thirty-six boxes of Narcan in total. And I'm probably skipping a whole bunch of programs in between here. I think I am, yes. Um, so then just the next highlight to call out would be for our walk-in clinic. We have continued with walk-in clinic services throughout twenty-two. Um, we provided service on four hundred and thirty-six times throughout two thousand twenty-two. So these are individuals that are coming in, whether they have a scheduled appointment or they're just literally a walk-in. Um, immunizations, whether it be childhood immunizations, adult immunizations, blood pressure checks, reproductive health services, emergency reproductive health services, um, sharps drop-offs, kind of a a plethora of a multitude of things. Um, amazingly enough, not as many bed bug complaints as what we've typically received in the past. So I definitely count that as a positive. Um, we've also assisted in establishing what we hope will continue to be an annual visit with the Wisconsin Well Woman Program, uh, where we have the mobile mammography unit and that is in Glidden. Um, it's been in April for the last two consecutive years and they do tentatively have the unit reserved for us going forward to have that annual visit. So we're very optimistic that that will continue. And that is the Cliff Notes Cliff Notes. Does anyone have any questions?
Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is the communicable, oops, yeah, communicable disease ordinance.
Hi again. So this is the updated, updated version that hopefully has all of the appropriate edits in it. Um, and we are looking to have this um recommended and approved to move forward um, for consideration to be implemented by the full county board. And are there
George, I know you have some comments, good questions.
Uh, I I would ask that we would hear from Administrator Grady. It seems to me at the last county board meeting, there was mention of a grant or funds coming to the county, which might have some restrictions pertaining to uh, quarantine uh, situations.
Okay, as per the shared revenue bill that just passed and was signed by the governor on yesterday. Um, there is a restriction on how long you can, well, well, close a business is really what they're talking about. And that's fourteen days.
So if I can speak to that, um, the state of Wisconsin is a home rule, home rule state. So the state sets the basis for it and then individual counties as home rule can implement ordinances at the local level that can be more restrictive than what the state has set as the baseline. So we can't be less restrictive, but we can potentially be more restrictive. So for an example of this situation, um, you know, if we were to write an order for communicable disease, and I'll just call out tuberculosis because it's near and dear to my heart right now. Um, tuberculosis, if an individual is noncompliant with the order for home quarantine, if they have tuberculosis, an active case of T V. The baseline treatment for any tuberculosis case is months, like we're you're looking at roughly twelve weeks of antibiotic therapy to fully cure tuberculosis. The person is considered contagious until they have completed at minimum, in most cases, twenty-eight days of antibiotic therapy. To be considered no longer contagious, while they are continuing to take the antibiotic therapy, they have to provide three sputum specimens collected at minimum eight, preferably twenty-four hours apart, at least one of those specimens collected first thing in the morning. Those specimens then have to go through a acid fast test and they have to go through culture growth and medium to see if there's still any tuberculosis bacteria growing in them. And that test itself can take, depending on the lab, how backed up they are, you're looking at approximately a week. So from the time they're collected until the time you have results, that's an additional week on top of the twenty-eight days that the person is already in home isolation because they are contagious. So you add a week onto that for each specimen. And keep in mind, if your first specimen comes back negative, your second specimen comes back positive, your third specimen comes back negative, your third specimen is now your first because you have to have three consecutive specimens. So they will have to continue to collect specimens until they all come back negative. At minimum, you are roughly estimating that this person is going to be, have an order to be in home quarantine for roughly forty days. If we go with the state minimum of fourteen days, that means that we would then be having to get the board together probably three times for one person for one order.
Right. And what the state legislature did was, it doesn't apply to individuals like this ordinance does. It applies to closing businesses. So you could only close a business for fourteen days because of communicable diseases. And if you're going to extend that, the entire county board has to approve that. So it's, what they did only really applies to closing a business and so would not apply to this ordinance.
So can we conclude that we do not have a conflict between these two uh, pieces of um
No, there's no conflict. There's I, no, because they were very specific about closing a business, not an individual.
Any other questions or comments? Laura?
This has all been run through all of our legal.
It has been reviewed by corp counsel, yes.
Okay, then I make a motion that we pass, let me scroll back though. Um, the communicable disease ordinance has written.
This is Joy I'll second.
Who seconded it? Joy?
Joy.
Motion, motion made and seconded to approve the communicable disease ordinance and send it on to the full county board. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
All abstain.
Motion carries. Written materials. We'll let you look at those at your leisure and if you have any questions, contact the supervisor involved. Next item is Corporation Counsel to represent interests of the public. Adam fifteen.
So uh, it just recently came to our attention that there may be a lapse in coverage from the Assistant District Attorney's Office representing our chips and gips cases in the children's unit. Um, and David Maney, the District Attorney, and Ruth Cressel, the Assistant District Attorney are here to provide information if that is okay with the board, if somebody would make a motion, motion to allow them to um, discuss.
Motion by Matt, is there a second to allow?
Laura Cruz, second.
All in favor of allowing uh, the District Attorney and the Assistant District Attorney to make comments about this uh, or explain it a little bit more. Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
The past history has been that the Assistant District Attorney has provided representation, legal representation in court um, in children and juvenile juvenile cases under the provisions of the statutes. The District Attorney's Office is responsible for providing representation on delinquency matters. So that's criminal offenses committed by persons under the age of seventeen. Chips, children in need of protection and services, and gips, juvenile in need of protection and services. Under the statutes, that authority can be delegated by the county board uh, to Corporation Counsel or Assistant Corporation Counsel as it is with the, with the approval under certain circumstances and attached is the statutory provisions um, that were provided seeking. One of the concerns that um, has been, I guess, developing. Um, earlier this year, I gave notice of my retirement. And unfortunately, uh, the lack of any type of um, person to fill the position is looming near, near. As each day passes, my anticipated retirement date is September 1st. The position, not only for the full-time position that I hold, but the point six position that an Assistant District Attorney would fill, that also provided coverage when I was unavailable. She has taken a position in Bayfield County, so that position is vacant. The advertisement for both of these positions has occurred since March. And at this point, there is nobody in the position to fill those. Now, this is not a situation just solely happening in Ashland County statewide. There are 49.9 ADA positions that are vacant. Now, that number is about from the total positions of ADAs, which I believe encompass around 400. But it is critical in county the size of Ashland because there is no other person to provide those services. Now, Terry and I had just a brief conversation. So juvenile in need of protection services is a different category than children in need of protection and services. Juveniles in need of protection and services are still children that are under the age of 18, but it's for, for juveniles or for children that are truant. In some cases, determined incompetent while they're in juvenile delinquency court. And I can't remember the other factors because those are the two primary ones that we have dealt with in the past.
The other one is youth that commit delinquent acts prior to the age of 10.
And I think we maybe had one of those. CHIPS is a wide gamut, but for most part, the cases that we file in Ashland County involve neglect or abuse or risk of abuse. Those are the primary ones. And then we also have the unborn child. And as was noted by the statistics, unfortunately, those have increased. The situation is for purposes of the children in need of protection or services under the statute 48.09. Because of the way that the statute is fashioned, it's sort of problematic because it has to be acted upon in odd number of years. And that's sort of passed. So in order to do anything about that, that's going to be two years down the road, frankly. With respect to the GIPS provision, it has, it can be, oh, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. I'm sorry. Yes. So the, the GIPS provision has to be by, would have had to been notification by January 1st of 2023. The CHIPS provision is by January 1st. Why is this critical? In my mind, it's critical because we have a number of cases. And even though every year we have more cases, that builds upon what in many instances is already a caseload. So for every case, even after it continues, there are at least at a minimum two hearings per year. One called a permanency plan review. And then of course, an extension because normally these orders are set up to last for one year. Those deadlines are something that the county needs representation on. There's certainly alternatives, obviously, to get a, another prosecutor in the office to do that. I don't know what the likelihood of that, but because we're at a point where it's not less, less than two months away, I thought it was prudent to bring this to your attention. In addition to that, the court has the ability to appoint a special prosecutor. I'm not sure where that would come from either. I mean, it's not, you know, the, the court has the authority to point attorneys. Unfortunately, our pool of attorneys is very limited. And there's a number that have conflicts. So to go out and find an attorney in the Ashland area that could, you know, be selected to do this, other than perhaps corp counsel that is now would probably be a difficult proposition. And I'm not, I'm not sure what the solution is, but I just want you to be aware that the county through these statutes does have the ability to hire assistant corporation counsel to handle these cases. And it's a factor that I think should be looked at. I can't tell you what the cost would be. There's multiple counties throughout the state in which corporation counsel represent the county in those cases instead of the District Attorney's Office. Some of them represent in both GIPS and CHIPS. Fortunately, our GIPS cases are by far less than the CHIPS cases. So that's one thing that's going for us, I would say. But unfortunately, there's a lot of timeliness and timelines and deadlines that have to be followed in both instances that are just required by statute to happen. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or if, you know, additional information is necessary from Terry or Jerry.
Matt?
You know, I'm looking at the statute there and it says it has, we have to notify DOA. Yeah, DOA, by January 1st of the year, we're going to do it. So have we already missed the boat?
Well, for the rest of this year, probably. I mean, starting January 24. Yeah, you would have to have it by January 24.
And then it also says for the GIPS one, that it can only be done an odd number of years. So what do we do to cover the gap? Is there a retired attorney maybe that would?
I'm not certain. I mean, this is not something that I've sought out, you know, from other counties as to what has happened in those cases. I think it's unique. You know, the fact that there are a position and a half in Ashland County or position a little more than a half to fill, that is great. It's just that if there's nobody there, I don't know how, I really don't know where you get that candidate from. And I know right now Alex Moorebacher, he has in many of the cases been a guardian ad litem for some of these children. So that poses a conflict for him. So what that ends up meaning is that it goes across the bay to John Carlson because he's corporate, corporate counsel for Bayfield County and they have, I think, an understanding agreement that in conflict cases similar to the Bayfield County Department of Health and Human Services, if there's a conflict case within that agency, Bayfield County DHS will assist.
I just wanted to say, Ruth, that Alex also does the child support cases. So any child support case that we typically get from there is a conflict also because it's, so that'll be a real problem also when we'll have John or Carla or whoever from over there, just an FYI.
Dan?
I think it's a little early to know really what we can do. The issue just came up yesterday. So I think it's really early and maybe if you want to do some sort of action, refer to executive committee. So we have time to figure out what's going on. What executive and finance, because it's going to cost money.
Right. And we, like you said, this just came up yesterday and Ruth just, Ruth and I just talked about it before the meeting to determine what it meant under the GIPS when it said to notify the Department of Administration of that change by January 1st of that year. And we needed to determine what year that year meant. And we both kind of agreed it meant 2023. January 1. So if it had meant 2024, then we would need to move on it quickly.
Right. I think we probably need to talk to WCA about this too.
About to?
WCA.
Okay.
I could just add a little bit to what Ruth said. Recruiting Assistant District Attorneys is a statewide problem. And I think it's particularly acute in our situation, our location, our the particular lack of attorneys in the northern counties of this state. There are many openings, both for Assistant District Attorneys and frankly, the governor has had problems appointing District Attorneys to vacant positions. So we have been advertising for both of the vacant positions. We have one full-time Assistant District Attorney, which is Ruth, and one part-time position, which is point six or three days a week, which we were able to get in the last budget. And as Ruth mentioned, Lynn Van Holland, who had filled that position, has now moved over to Bayfield County. So with Ruth's retirement, there would just be the DA position here and you know, frankly, just an inability to cover not only these cases, but much of the, the rest of the docket and the cases that we have. So we have had, in response to our recruitment efforts, one applicant in the last four to five months, and that is an attorney in Utah. And I'm not really sure whether that, that person, whether she'll decide it makes sense to try to move out here with her fiance. So we face challenges. The plan will be, there is an office within the State Department of Administration for the District Attorney Program. And I've been in contact with that administrator over the past several months to try to consider contingency plans. When there was a vacancy in the District Attorney's Office before I was appointed, they were able to appoint prosecutor on a temporary basis. And whether that'll be able, whether Casey Dice, the administrator, will be able to do that. You know, in the September timeframe, we'll have to wait and see. But the question then would be whether that person, you know, has any expertise in these types of cases too. And so that, I just wanted to add that to what Ruth said. And, you know, we are working to try to solve the situation, but so far, no luck.
So what should be our course of action? Should we approve this request or?
I think like, I think like Dan said, we should get more information from WCA and the counties who, who have done this and what has worked out. I anecdotally had a meeting talking to some other counties and many of the counties do it differently. So I think we need to gather more information. The impetus was the September due date on here, and that obviously doesn't apply because we missed that already. So we do have some time to do a little more exploring and gather more information and bring it back to
Our next meeting.
If that's okay with everybody.
Any further comments or questions? We'll move on to board member updates and suggested agenda items. George?
Okay. So at our most recent Ashland County AG and UW Extension Committee meeting, the question was raised whether Health and Human Services would have any representation during the Ashland County Fair for purposes of making people more aware of the services that are available. So the question was raised, I just thought I'd bring it up here.
I know in the past, we've, we've had people who have, like, we've had pamphlets and brochures about our programs down there, but we haven't had people stationed there. It's just a lack of staff availability and overtime, but, but we do try to get information available at the fair and other large outreach events.
Any other suggestions by board members? Laura?
This is Laura. You know, I have been pushing for at each different committee that I'm on to have a better fiscal dashboard for our committees for a little better understanding of each one of the budgets. So if we could start working on that and, and have something that is a little more clear than, than what we get. And I know you guys have a complicated budget, but just something that's in the clerk's office has worked on this too. And I know you guys, I'm pretty certain, are you guys working on a different? Well, all the, all the different fiscal softwares that are just coming in and going out and, and everything, but just so we can have a better picture of the financial position than, than the church that we get.
Amber?
Hey Laura. So yes, of all of our projects, we are creating, trying to switch over from our other software to be fully on Springbrook with all of the detail. So working on new account numbers for that. And I have lots of plans for updating these reports and doing something different. I'm just continuing at this point what has already been done. You know, and getting a really good understanding. So it is coming, but you know, you can just be a little bit, you know, patient with me. I, I'm, I'm hoping that by the end
She, Sue knows I'm a pain in the butt too. So, but I should, I should have known you were working on it too. No, that's okay.
No, it's fine. You know, just because we have so much changes like, and I want to try to make it so it can be easier to understand, but also quicker to create than, than what I already have. You know, but you know, I think during this budget time coming up, I, there's going to be a lot happening. But so I, you know, I'd say coming soon, but it might still take a few months, you know, up to, until we can get all that. But yeah, so lots of fun stuff happening and I, and I can definitely keep you updated if you, if you'd like.
I'm patient and I appreciate the effort that you're putting into it.
Thank you.
Any other updates or comments by board members? At this time, I will reconvene the public hearing and then I'll ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
A move that we come out of public hearing, that appears that we've had all the comments we're going to have.
Second, motion made and seconded, seconded by George to come out of the public hearing. All in favor? Or is that a rule call too? I think it's just all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business to come before the board?
Clarence, am I able to, to bring something up?
I'm not, I don't know that, I mean, it's not on the, if it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Matt?
In light of what was presented today, I'd asked that we look at what our options would be to perhaps provide a funding source for the resource that was requested. The, I'm not sure what the term was, was it?
Child forensic interview?
Yes. Just at least look at it, see what we can maybe do.
Okay.
This is Laura Cruz. I, I wholeheartedly agree. I think that, um, ha- having been a foster parent and been gone through some of the, those kinds of investigations and what families go through with children. Um, it's really imperative that we provide a safer environment than we're able to provide right now. And, um, in the long-term effects of trauma, uh, we can pay earlier or we can pay later. And I think, uh, being humane and doing it earlier is really critical. Thank you.
I don't think we quite caught all of that, Laura, but I, I understand that you kind of agree with what Matt said.
Yeah, I'm a little long-winded than he is, but as.
I think you're, you're breaking up just a little bit on us, so.
Okay. Um, just as a, a former, uh, foster parent and having gone through some investigations, uh, uh, during that time period, um, and knowing what I know, uh, about trauma and the impact, uh, I think it's really critical that our county figure out some funding sources, wherever that may be, um, to, uh, address this concern. Um, a safer place than is being provided right now. And so I would hope that we can figure out some strategies to make this happen sooner than later. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Laura. Any other comments by board members? Otherwise, our next scheduled meeting date is September twentieth. And now we need a motion to adjourn. Actually, don't need one. I could have just adjourned the meeting since we've completed the agenda. So I will. Meeting adjourned.
Now that we're adjourned, I feel like I have to say something still.